Morning.
Morning, Ron.
Good morning. I'm gonna get a dab more coffee and I'll be right back. All right. Might survive the meeting today.
Morning, Ryan. This is Patricia. So I'm wondering why you sent a second letter into City Hall for me to sign because I came by and signed one last week.
Yeah, we just wanted to to sign copies.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I get this back to you?
Yeah, you can give it to Kelly. I I had left a little note why we needed it.
Okay. All right, I will get it back to her then. Thank you.
Thank you. I also left some vouchers there to be signed if you could include those.
Yes, happy to do that. Thanks, Victoria.
Yeah, we we sent one one original and then we wanted to keep it an original.
I was confused.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning, Andre.
Well, good morning, sports fans. It's eight thirty, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And if Mr. Ryan would do the introductions of guests and staff, I would appreciate it.
Okay, Dr. Clary.
Here.
Commissioner McKinney.
I believe she's signing on, Ryan. Okay.
All right, Commissioner Lindy.
I hear. Good morning.
Councilmember Byers.
Good morning.
Councilmember Duval. Dr. Atterbury. Okay, it looks like Commissioner McKinney is present, but she's having some technical difficulties. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Okay, then we'll go back to the councilmember Duval.
Present.
And Dr. Atterbury.
Present.
Okay, then you have the district staff, Andre Fresco. Here, good morning. Myself, Ryan Iback, Chase Porter.
Good morning, President.
Melissa Sixberry.
Here.
Lilian Bravo.
Good morning.
Tom McGee. Nathan Johnson. Dr. Bard. Jocelyn Castillo. Victoria Reyes.
Here.
James Elliott.
Good morning.
Morning. And then Chase Porter, you have a staff member. Would you like to introduce?
Yes, yeah, our my new accountant Gabriella, we call her Gabby for short. She's been with us for a couple of weeks now. Really excited to have her on. She'll be actually replacing our current accountant Menico, who's gonna be retiring at the end of February. So, you know, sad to see Menico go, but really happy to have Gabby on. Gabby, you wanna maybe say a few things?
Yeah, hi, I just want to introduce myself and I wanted to say thank you for having me here today.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, that's all the the guests that we have.
Okay, thank you, sir. And next then will be the review of submitted public written comments in Mr. Ryan.
Okay, so we have two written comments that were submitted for the Board of Health meeting. The first one is from Jeremy Hines. I guess it takes forty five days to formulate a response when confronted with information that goes against mainstream media. And the response isn't even well thought out. I guess YHD doesn't have funding for mental health, and that is an excuse as to why we damage mental health in exchange for short term gains in physical health. The article I referenced in my December twenty second, two thousand twenty one email was published on September twenty third, twenty twenty. So we ignore articles in the NIH at YHD or do we cherry pick them? On August twenty third, twenty twenty one, Zach Ringelstein, elementary school teacher educator and PhD student at Columbia University trained in trauma information correction says, mass and social distancing induce trauma and trauma at a young age is developmentally dangerous, especially for children who are experienced trauma in other parts of their lives. In the published fourth article, why would we ignore equity for the vulnerable? As a child that grew up in a poor home, single mother with an income below the federal poverty line, to an adult that is upper middle class in terms of income because of equity, all I have to say is shame on you. The blow is the blow is excerpted from a memo published on March tenth, twenty twenty one. Quote, our mental health is important, and we have seen the impact of COVID pandemic has had on our collective health. While public health recommendations are necessary to stop the spread of COVID nineteen, they can make us feel isolated and increase our stress. Therefore, it is important to find healthy ways to cope and take care of our mental health. Now, a quote from Dr. Larry Yekka, the interim health officer of the Acma Health District. Then the quote from Andre Fresco, Executive Director of the Acma Health District, the Acma Health District invested in the My Strength app to allow individuals in the Acma County access to tools to help manage their mental mental and behavioral health during the COVID nineteen pandemic. It's crucial to find healthy ways to focus on your mental health. Use it at home with your family, on your break, or to help you go to sleep. The app was selected due to its availability to all our community members. It is free to use and available in English and Spanish. Consider using this app as a resource for your well being. And then the next letter is from Diana Isominger. According to Black Black's Law Dictionary, both parties have to agree in order to form a mandate to be law to be lawful or enacted. Even though I have not contracted with you verbally or in writing to facilitate any mandate, my constitutional rights have been infringed. There needs to be redress of grievance. Now, now that enough proof has come out regarding the effectiveness of the COVID so called vaccine, which we now discover is not what we were told, and we were watching our friends and family members dropping dead all around us. The fact that we are now being told to get tested for HIV because they use this to develop the vaccine and the damage caused by mask wearing that will not be evident for years to come, these unconstitutional unlawful mandates need to stop. If you need further proof, a good place to start is frontline doctors and the myriad of current and past studies on mask wearing, especially for people with lung issues. We, the people, are looking into your surety bonds, your employees serve the people and are legally responsible for carrying bonds in order to execute your responsibilities. The law tells us if you're not bonded, you need to resign immediately. This has the potential for being a personal personally costly situation for your staff as well. I myself was charged with trespass in a local clinic having to do with the mask issue. I have lung problems. This is discrimination to expect me to put my health at risk. The science being pushed by mainstream media is not science. It is an opinion pushed by people who have financial interests and pharmaceutical companies. If science cannot be questioned, there's not science. It's propaganda. If you follow the money, it is clear the people pushing these mandates are well invested in Pfizer. Anyone in your office invested in any vaccine companies, the CDC is also not a governmental organization. It is a for profit vaccine company. They deal in stockholder capitalism, public health. We, the people, are worried and have suffered very real health damage by your actions. This cannot continue, and we are ready to move forward with lawful constitutional steps we can take to resolve these issues. It is my hope your organization will take a step back and reevaluate the criteria in which you have chosen to take our rights away and make the proper correction. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you to the folks who wrote the sent those letters in. Appreciate it. We will next move to consent agenda. There will be a motion to approve all items listed with the asterisk are considered routine by the Health Board and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I moved. Consent agenda.
Okay, that was kind of a tie.
So give it to Patricia. I'm fine.
Council Council Lady, Council Member Patricia Byers made the motion. Is there a second?
This Commissioner Lindy, I can second.
Second, second. Thank you much. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody else? I hear three. Is there is there more? Maybe we should take a poll then, Ryan, because I'm not hearing everybody.
Okay, if you're in favor of the consent agenda, please state aye. If not, please state no. Dr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. McKinney?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Councilmember Byers?
Aye.
Councilmember Duval?
Aye.
Dr. Atterbury?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Hi, thank you much. Appreciate it. Now we'll move on to the spotlight. Environmental Health Part One, Mr. McGee.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. There's a screen. Perfect. Appreciate that. Okay, so we had to break this down into separate parts because, well, we have a lot of programs in environmental health and I didn't want to take up the entire board meeting, so. We're gonna have a our first part of a potentially three part series for our spotlight on environmental health today. Next slide, please. Okay, for today's presentation, we're gonna be looking at a brief division overview. So environmental health, you know, at at the Acma Health District, what does it look like? Talking about some of the services we we offer in environmental health, specifically our food safety program, water recreation and youth camp program. And then also what what purpose do those programs serve for our environmental health division? Next slide, please. So a lot of people that I've encountered working out in the field and talking with people on the phone, even interviewing some candidates, it's what is environmental health? A lot of people think of, well, protect the environment, don't pollute the water, don't pollute the ground. You know, save the trees, that kind of stuff, which that is a component of it. But what we're really talking about with environmental public health is focusing in on the relationships between people and the environment they live in. We're looking at promoting human health and safety and and securing or fostering healthy and and safe communities by ensuring the environment in which they live is it's safe. Next slide, slide please. So here's a a list of our major programs within the Environmental Health Division. Each program has several subcategories to it. For example, drinking water will have sanitary surveys or or group B community water systems, but they all fall under, you know, the the overarching program. So today we're gonna be looking at food safety and water wrecks, water wreck and camps. Next slide, please. So our environmental health program here, we're staffed with our our one environmental health technician. This this staff person operates our environmental health help desk. This person's kind of the the front lines to the public who are submitting applications, calling in to ask questions, sending in emails to request documentation that that's in our records on certain parcels such as septic system as built, approved, you know, two party shared wells or or community water systems, those kinds of things to help aid them in the purchase or development of a property. So our our help desk technician or EH technician kind of does that triage of who needs what and where do they need to go if they need more technical assistance. We have our seven environmental health specialists. These are our field staff, also known as our inspectors. They're the ones going out and doing all these services out into the community. What's unique with the Acma Health District and and our EH division is that all of our environmental health specialists are required to earn their registered sanitarian certification within the first two years of employment at YHD. This is a nationally recognized testing program, so this is a pretty robust exam that they need to study for. They need to pass it to obtain that registered sanitarian certificate. So also to even sit and take the exam, you have to have a certain certain criteria met in their educational history. Specific, you know, certain number of credit hours in the hard sciences or a degree in public health to to even qualify to take the exam. So this has been implemented here at YHD to really target, you know, the best and brightest available candidates to us that, you know, we feel are gonna be the the most capable and and most qualified to learn this job because it there are a number of regulations, a number of programs that they have to work in and be fluent in. You know, on the fly out in the field, people are turning to them for information to know what they need to do for their next project. So this is this has been implemented to target the best available candidates that are out there wanting to work in environmental public health, which I feel has had served us well so far. We we have recruited very, very qualified staff. And then also myself, Environmental Health Director for a total of nine staff in our Environmental Health Division. A quick note on our budget, we do have an annual operating budget of around one point three million dollars. Some of that is secured through outside funding sources here locally or from the state level. But a large portion of that is generated through our our permit and licensing fees from it could be new new businesses trying to get a permit or a license and then our annual renewals that happen every year. Next slide, please. So jumping into our food safety program, this is by far our largest program. It's year round. There are always, there's always work to be done in our food program. We have an annual budget of around four hundred sixty five thousand dollars and three and a half of full time employees dedicated to this program every year. So of my seven field staff, about half the time is spent working in the food program annually. With this program, we have three subcategories or subprograms. We have our temporary food events. These are the food vendors you see at like the State Fair or other events around the valley. People setting up booths and serving all that delicious food you get at those fun events around our our community. We have our school food safety program and we have our food education program, which is mostly the issuance of our our food worker or food handler cards, however you want to refer to those. But we we support that program here as well. Next slide, please. So looking in in more detail at our food program, really the the goal and purpose of this program is to ensure the safe handling and preparation practices of of our retail food being served, you know, in our food industry in the Acma County. We want to ensure that food is safe for the public to eat. We want to prevent foodborne illness outbreaks. When those foodborne illness outbreaks do occur, and and we do get some here and there. It's been quite a quiet lately, thankfully, but we are heavily involved in the investigation and follow up work that goes on when a restaurant has an outbreak. So diving into some of the work that we do or most of the work that we do in our food safety program, we are involved from start to to finish of of the life cycle of a restaurant, from before they open their doors to if they ever decide to close their doors. So on on intake of an application for a new establishment, we're looking at floor plans, we're looking at equipment requirements, so commercial grade refrigeration, dishwashing, those kinds of things. We're looking at refrigeration space due to the the volume that they're saying they're going to serve food on a daily basis. Do they have enough space to store all this food safely? We're looking at menu items to to kind of just identify if there's any special processes that need to be addressed, there's a need to be a written plan for, you know, making using sous vide to make certain meats, or are they gonna be smoking any meat? You know, those special processes need a written plan to identify some of those critical preparation points to keep that food safe and and, you know, not potentially get somebody ill. And then also we we are the licensing regulatory authority for our area food establishments. We currently license one thousand two hundred and twenty two food establishments in the Acma County. That number's up from a couple of years ago. We were a couple of years ago, I believe, we were just under a thousand, so. Well, maybe three years ago it was. We were under a thousand, just under a thousand. So we're growing, which is which is the good sign. But we we do those annual licensing renewals and inspections on twelve hundred and twenty two food establishments every year. So looking at talking about the inspections, as I said, we conduct at minimum a routine annual inspection of every food establishment in the Acma County. I'd say at minimum because if the routine inspection doesn't go well and they they don't pass based on the the State Department of Health inspection criteria or inspection forms. If they don't pass, they've hit a certain point threshold by obtaining a certain number of violations noticed by YHD EH staff, then they have to have a follow up inspection. So we'll we're always education first, enforcement second. So if they don't pass an inspection or we see a violation, we're going to discuss that with management or the owner, whoever's walking with us during this inspection to educate them on why that's a violation. What is the purpose? You know, what the rule states? What's the purpose of that rule? It's the intent of that rule and how they specifically in their process can make these changes to be in compliance with that rule long term. Then we'll come back to a follow up. If they've corrected everything, the process stops there. If they're still struggling or choosing not to listen to our our you know, advice and the educational material they've given them, then we'll go further into more inspections and follow a compliance schedule, potentially having an in office conference with myself and our food program lead to kind of discuss and come up with a written plan of of how things are gonna change and how they're gonna operate within the scope of the rule for the long term. And then after a certain number of compliance inspections that are passed, they get back on. And then after a certain number of compliance inspections that are passed, they get back on the normal annual routine uh schedule. So we also uh conduct inspections on our temporary food events. Um, I didn't use the data from 2020 and 2021 because those are down quite a bit due to COVID and the limit, limitations to events. But from 2016 to 2019, I averaged the number of PFE permits that we have annually and we do about 550 temporary food event inspections annually uh during our normal years. Um, again, these are the food vendors that you see at the central uh central, that Central Washington State Fair, uh other major events that we have in the county. And so we have staff in the evenings, on holidays and on weekends out there in the field uh uh inspecting these temporary food vendors to ensure that the food that they're serving the public is uh meeting the criteria of, of our food safety rule. So that's again, you know, a, a lot of uh inspections that we do annually for our, for uh our community. Uh, we also um, and I missed the bullet here, but we do our school food safety program. It was on the previous slide, but we do um, we inspect all 94 Yakima County schools for food safety. Uh, they have a contract uh that requires their local health jurisdiction to give them uh an uh inspection twice, twice per school year to secure grant funding through SPI. So we accommodated them with uh a, a food safety inspection. Also, it's good to ensure that our schools are, are serving safe food to our children. Uh, so again, we have 94 schools that we inspect and we do that twice a year. Um, um, to meet, help them meet their criteria of uh uh through their funding programs. And then also it allows us to monitor, you know, our food safety in our schools. Uh, we, we have our uh food education uh program, which is the issuance of our food handler cards. And I, I double-checked the numbers on this because I thought it seemed like a lot, but uh, you know, this, this past year, we issued almost 10,000 carts uh to our community. Now, um, so these are all the people that work in food industry. These are all the food workers in the schools. The, there's a lot of positions out there uh that require the, the state of Washington uh food worker card. So uh I, I guess I'm not surprised that it was almost 10,000 carts issued because uh there, there's a lot of jobs out there that do require this. Um, prior to our, the COVID pandemic, we would also uh go out and teach uh food worker card classes in person to a couple of our local high schools, uh YV Technical Institute, the Accumbination would do a class a couple of times a year. So hopefully as things start returning back to normal, uh COVID uh cases uh go down enough, we, we can uh consider offering those uh those educational classes again. It, it's just a kind of a different approach to be in person with these folks, teaching them in a classroom setting, having them take the exam right there. I, 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 I personally enjoy teaching those classes. Um, we also have, uh, we do our foodborne illness outbreak response. Uh, as these outbreaks are reported to us or we start to see a pattern with uh food complaints of people getting ill at a specific uh restaurant, we will uh work with Melissa uh and her team to i- identify if there is an outbreak and then we need to identify what caused the outbreak. So we will be responding to the folks that tested positive for, you know, whatever foodborne illness that they have, uh we'll be conducting interviews with the people who have gotten sick, trying to come up with a pattern of when they ate at a specific restaurant, what did they eat? How long did it take till they started showing symptoms? Kind of formulate a pattern and get an idea of, of what timeframe uh we need to look at for the, the operations of this food establishment. We then conduct environmental health assessments on the establishment, interviewing employees, management, looking at food handling practices, hopefully to identify the source of an outbreak. Uh, we're also looking at potential closure of the facility for deep cleaning disinfection. So uh that's, that's a, a kind of a brief outline of where our process is when we do have outbreaks, but we are responsive when those occur. We have uh emergency response situations as well, uh the most common being a kitchen fire, you know, with the, with the fryers. Uh, those tend to catch fire when they're not main maintained or cleaned um regularly. Uh, but uh some of those emergency responses that require immediate closure of facility or, or fire flooding, wastewater backing up into uh the sinks, kitchen area, the drains, uh no hot water to the facility and foodborne illness outbreaks and uh power outage. So when those things occur, we work directly with uh the restaurant owner and management uh to get the facility closed. We'll go onsite, look at uh what the required next steps are to um get the, the facility clean, disinfected, any affected food products uh that started off, uh what can, and what food products can be saved. Uh, those, those kinds of things, what we're looking at. Once the adequate repairs are made to, you know, um fix the issue and the facility's been cleaned and the food product that is there is safe, um, then we will give the approval to, to reopen. Um, usually it's a very quick process, usually they have a plan in place and uh we're ready to go, you know, a day or two later. So um, w- we do have those pop up um a few times a year as well. Next slide, please. So moving over into our water recreation and camps program. Um, the purpose of this program is to uh ensure public health and safety through um, you know, inspections and uh checking water quality uh for our water recreational um facilities. Uh, and then our, our youth camps are, are operating in a way that is um safe and promoting uh public health and safety and camps are pretty unique. I'll talk about those on the next slide in more detail. So our work in, in our pools and spa facilities, uh it's a much smaller program than, than uh food safety. We have an annual operating budget of around $51,000. Uh, point three FTEs dedicated to this program as it's very seasonal. Uh, we, we aid uh the Washington State Department of Health in the plan review process. So a new facility that's going to be coming online and, and seeking a permit from us, uh DOH will, Department of Health will allow us to partner with them on, on the pre-operational plans that are reviewed and, and um any corrections needed to be made to the construction or layout of the facility happen at that plan review portion. So we are involved, so we're aware of what's coming our way and what we need to look at when we do our pre-operational inspection before issuing a permit. But we are the regular authority, regulatory authority on our local pools and spas. So we do annual renewal permitting and licensing of, of our annual and seasonal uh facilities. Uh, much like uh our, our food program, uh we conduct annual routine inspections of all our seasonal and annual pools and spas. Uh, at minimum, they get their, their one annual inspection. If there are issues that need correction, uh we're talking about, you know, and some immediate uh public health threats when we're dealing with pools. If chlorine levels are too low, uh different uh chemical levels in the pool are too high or too low, that causes unsafe environment. People can, can become ill. Uh, there was the Legionella outbreak uh a few years ago at one of our facilities um that we had to respond to. So it is important work that we make sure the, the water recreation quality is, is meeting standard because uh people can get sick from, from pools. It's not often thought about, but it, it can lead to, to a serious illness. I believe a couple of people were hospitalized from that uh Legionella outbreak as well. So we're looking at, you know, safety features, you know, fence gap sizing, do the gates latch uh automatically behind somebody when they go through it? So we're looking at ways to prevent children and pets from getting into the pool area on their own without adult supervision. Um, and then obviously, um, you know, what lifesaving mechanisms are there? First aid, bodily fluids, milk kits, liferings uh are all things we're looking for uh beyond just the, the water quality. Uh, as, as a standard for us, we take an educational approach. However, with pools, it's unique, the violations are usually immediate corrective action items that need to take place for the pool to continue to operate. So um if there is some of those items, the pool may temporarily have to close. When those items are addressed, they'll call us, we'll come right back out and uh you know, test the water or make sure the gate is latching automatically, things like that. And if it is corrected, we'll allow the pool to reopen immediately. So we try to be nimble and very responsive because some of these pools are so seasonal, uh we don't want to keep them closed any longer than they have to be. For outbreak response, um I, I, I briefly touched on it when it's fairly rare, but when we do have outbreaks, we are going to the facility much like a, a uh food establishment. We're walking through the facility with uh uh the, the operator, looking at all the different components, making sure, you know, everything's working right. Um, uh, we have our, the treatment, water treatment is working right, filtration system is working right. Um, you know, because all the, if those components start to break down or fail or not doing their job or well maintained, that's when we can lead to an outbreak. But during outbreak response, those are the things we're identifying as potential sources. If uh those aren't adequately maintained. Uh, during outbreak response, we will often partner with the State Department of Health Water Recreation Team um as they, they offer uh usually pretty robust support in our outbreak response. Uh, next slide, please. So moving over into the youth camp side, uh again, the, the purpose is the same. We're, we're trying to secure and ensure public health and safety. These are really important and critical because uh we're often dealing with, with our youth, um with our kids. Um, this falls, the work that we do in these camps, it falls under the same budget category as our water recreation. Um, we have nine camps. Um, oh, and I'm sorry, for the record, I forgot to give a couple more stats for pools. We conduct a uh inspection on 102, 102 water recreation facilities every year. 26 being annually operated and 76 being seasonal. So this, the, for your information there, one of the provide numbers with what it is we actually do as well. So for our camps, we uh, we uh oversee uh and permit annually nine youth camps uh in Yakima County. Uh, these are unique because our inspections of these camps really encompass all of our programs in one location. They're often very remote, so we're looking at a drinking water well or a water system that provides water. We're looking at an onsite septic system that provides wastewater disposal. A lot of these camps have pools, uh so we're looking at water recreation quality uh and safety. Uh, these camps also serve food to a, a lot of people who are, are utilizing these camps uh during their, their operating, operating season. So we're looking at food safety items. So when we show up for an inspection, they're often pretty robust and pretty lengthy because we're, we're doing uh inspections within, you know, four or five different programs in one location. So uh they're pretty unique. Um, we don't have very many of them, but it, it's something that we look at closely just because there is a lot of opportunities uh uh for, you know, public health threats to arise simply because we're talking about so many different programs being managed at one site where public health risks are a potential uh, potential if uh routine maintenance and, and certain criteria aren't met and uh certain regulations aren't being followed. Again, with our camps, they're very, very seasonal, so uh we, when we do find issues, we're providing education on why it's an issue. But again, it, it's so seasonal and there's so many people that frequent these camps every operating season that corrective action is oftentimes needed right away. Um, we can't have, uh, you know, a septic system that's backing up and having a camp operate. We can't have a water system that is testing positive for, for coliform, um, you know, serving water to hundreds of children. So, you know, usually action items are, are required right away for a camp to be, to continue to operate. And we did have, we, we are involved in outbreak responses regulatory authority. We, a few years ago, actually, like a month after I first started at YHD, uh there was a Shagalla outbreak at one of our camps, which is a fecal oral transmitted uh foodborne illness. Uh, so it could have been many things. It could have been uh sick food worker, uh contaminating food. It could have been a, a child had it uh and was shedding virus, um, you know, using the restroom facilities, not adequately washing hands. Uh, there's a multitude of ways that this outbreak could, could have been caused. And so we were onsite conducting interviews with uh camp leaders, employees, food workers to try to narrow down what the source of this was, as many people were popping up positive for Shagalla. So um an outbreak at one of these uh is, is quite busy and, and quite the heavy workload. So we, we do our best in our inspections to ensure that everything is uh operating in tip-top shape. So um, next slide, please. So we do uh Yakima Health District, we have our three strategic goals. Um, how environmental health integrates with those goals is, well, for the first one, deliver mandated services. That's a large part of what environmental health is, is mandated services. So um us completing this work and working in these programs uh is us delivering our mandated services. We're always looking to increase our effectiveness and our efficiency of our services. Uh, good example is recently uh partnering with Yakima County Public Services and um uh making changes to our uh septic clearance process as it relates to issuing building permits to reduce drastically reduce wait times for, for folks to secure a building permit on a project. So we're always looking at ways to improve our process and make our programs uh run more seamlessly. Uh, we've made uh several changes to uh upgrades to our permitting software uh in an attempt to go more electronic inspection forums instead of handwritten forums um uh to, to be more efficient in that regard. So giving staff all the tools necessary to, to plan inspection, completing the inspection and result that inspection in our system uh as quickly as possible and uh communicating with our community members that uh what the results are and what the next steps are as quickly as possible. Uh, we're always looking at ways to improve that. Another goal, uh strategic goal, developing a network of community partners that are best at improving public health. A lot of our work um is done in partnership with, with other agencies. Uh, we can go to next slide, please. Um, I've listed here uh several of our partners that we have that we work with uh to be able to achieve a lot of our program goals and deliver our mandated services more effectively. Uh, we work in partnership with a lot of, of state agencies um through various programs, Department of Health. Uh, we work with uh and partner with in all of our programs and uh, you know, rec consultation on what the regulations say and what next steps are. They help with a lot of our foodborne illness outbreaks or, or outbreaks in other programs. Department of Ecology has been a valued partner in our solid waste program for many years. Um, so, you know, you can see we have a lot of local and state partners that, that work with us consistently um to help us achieve our, our services. A lot of these partners here work in other programs we didn't talk about today and I can touch on those partners um a- as we uh do spotlights on other environmental health programs. So with that, uh I would entertain any questions if anybody has it. I know that was a lot and I, sorry, I went over my time.
Thank you very much, Sean. That's a very comprehensive report, I appreciate it. Any questions for Sean?
Yes, I have a question. So um, uh Sean, you know, you're talking about the camps, do all the camps have pools?
I
And I, the nine youth camps, do they all have pools?
I'm not sure if all of them do. I know some of them do, I'd have to get back to you on that one.
Um, that's okay. I'm just wondering if, if a camp is by a natural water source like a lake, can they use that uh for recreational activities and how do you monitor that?
Uh, I believe they can, because I know they do. But yes, typically, you know, i- it is a natural surface water environment. Um, you know, you're going to have more turnover and, and stuff uh typically than you would a, a, a body of water contained in a concrete box. So um, I'd have to look further into what the regulations say about natural water body versus, you know, a, a pool or spa that would have to be licensed. Uh, and I can, I can come up with more information for you on that one.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Sean?
Uh, Commissioner, uh, I was just going to recognize that uh Dr. Cleary and Commissioner um Lindy have their hands raised.
Okay, all right. Dr. Cleary.
Um, what did, I had a similar question to uh uh council member Byers. Um, and to follow up on that, uh the uh camps that are associated with uh bodies of water that are in parks. Um, so most of the ones off of uh Highway 12, uh that actually falls to So most of the ones off of Highway 12, uh, that actually falls to the, the park system to monitor those bodies of water. But we have some locally that are private and so I had a question about whether, Ms. McGee, you are available to test private bodies of water that are used for recreation. And one that comes to mind is, is Lake Aspen. It's, uh, used by a lot of triathletes for open water swimming, um, uh, just for training, but also for the Valley of the Sun. It, it has a history of having schistosomiasis that, that causes swimmer's itch. But hopefully now the restaurant is gone, the, the amount of birds will decrease. But a coliform infestations of lakes has been a common reason for shutting down triathlons. And I was just wondering if, if your department was available to test prior to events.
We, we can explore that. I mean, really the, the extent of our work would be to collect the water sample and bring it to the lab. So, uh, there's potential there for us to, to discuss that and maybe be able to collect water samples. I know we do have like our mortgage review program under, under the drinking water program looks at us collecting as a unbiased third party, a water sample to take to a lab for a drinking water well. But yeah, I, I, I'm curious about that and, and I would like to discuss that more as to the possibility.
Okay, and, and Mr. Anderson, if I can continue, I have two other questions.
Sure.
So another one is about the food safety program. I was just looking online to try to find the most recent results of inspections. And the Yakima Herald used to have a, a site, but it's, it's very out of date. And, and the Health District site shows inspections up to 2019. I was wondering what the best way is for the public to get the most recent inspection reports.
Yeah, the, the Yakima Herald used to request, uh, public records request monthly for our, our inspect, food inspection results. And they, they haven't requested those in some time. I believe you can look up, uh, specific restaurants through the online portal to the county as that is a record search mechanism that is live. And I, I believe there's a way to do that, um, to look up specific restaurants. But I don't know about, you know, viewing all the scores highest to lowest, you know, as a light item. So, um, if that's something that we, we need to look into to, to make more readily available, um, we, we can certainly do that.
Okay. And then my, my last question was about partnerships. The last summer was about the third or fourth summer in a row with, uh, uh, pretty severe heat illness and smoke issues. And this past year, I know that some companies donated air purifiers and filters to the community. And I was wondering if you're working to establish additional partners for potential fire season this year. And the other thing that happened this past summer was that all the heating and cooling companies were, uh, back logged on, on calls. And there were a lot of people that couldn't get, uh, air conditioners fixed and such during the heat wave. I was wondering if you're working to partner with either those companies or with say Perry Tech that does HVAC, uh, you know, um, education to establish a, a team in case, uh, you know, communities, elderly patients or elderly citizens need to access services for their air conditioning.
Right. I, I haven't done, uh, much work in, in that arena. But that is something that I can, I can certainly sit down with Nathan, our, um, our local emergency response coordinator to discuss what possibilities are there for, for certain partnerships. But yeah, I ha, I have not been heavily involved in that arena just yet.
Dr. Cleary, I can, I can add a little if, if you don't mind.
That'd be great.
One of the things that we, pre-COVID, we had been working on really was the impacts of the environment on people's health. And so as you mentioned, what we would refer to as, you know, fecal coliform or bacteria in waterways, because we're an agricultural community, many people during seasonal swimming will swim in rivers. We're concerned about that. I'm happy for Melissa, our, our Director of Disease Control to weigh in, but that's something seasonal that happens. We also know that many people suffer with asthma in the valley. And we also know that the, uh, homes that people rent, what we would refer to as housing stock is often older, especially in the lower valley. So there are many, um, opportunities for remediation for these issues. But it is pretty complex in terms of oversight, partnership, and certainly money. But it is something that we are concerned about because we know that people are affected. And as you indicated appropriately during, uh, summer months, when people are, um, without air conditioning, it can actually become life threatening. So, uh, these are certainly things that we want to focus on in the future. And that is, again, this partnership, not only with eight outside agencies, but also within our own agency in terms of the value of environmental public health.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lindy and then Commissioner McKinney.
Oh, yes, uh, Sean, thank you for the orientation. I sure appreciate it. It's been very helpful and informational. I did want to ask one question about the, uh, on the food safety side. In the last few years, how often have we seen foodborne illness outbreaks? And, and do you see a, a source more common than others?
Uh, yeah, uh, we haven't had an outbreak in quite a while, I believe. I don't want to name restaurant names, but, uh, we had one, uh, just prior to the, the COVID event or COVID pandemic hitting Yakima County. And before that, I think on average, we'd probably get two or three a year. And most commonly it's been norovirus. And more often than not, we were not the source of the contaminated food. Whether it's contaminated by a sick food worker or improper storage, whatever is actually cut lettuce. So, and yeah, um, and then more common than that kind of lettuce that is at a self-serve buffet. Cause you have a lot of hands grabbing the utensils to self-serve lettuce. But you never would think there's a cut, cut lettuce as a potentially hazardous food. But once it is cut, it is a potentially hazardous food and must be, um, kept cool or kept hot appropriate. So that, that is in my research and through outbreaks that I've been involved with, um, the most common source of food that can get people sick.
And also if I can, if I can add to the three most common sources of foodborne illness are bare hand contact with food, ill food workers and lack of hand washing. And so if you get all three of those, you have an ill food worker that's not washing their hands and then handling food with their bare hands, you're most likely going to get some type of outbreak.
And the public health nurse says anytime we get a, a notified condition like E. coli or salmonella, we're always asking those individuals if they, um, work in food industry. And if they do, then we, we have to write a letter to their employer stating that they cannot work. We don't specify the disease, but we do notify the employer that they, they are being, um, evaluated by the Yakima Health District and they cannot return to work until a certain day, which would be the end of their infectious period. Uh, and then of course we always monitor. So if we get a complaint from that particular restaurant, we can link it back to an ill, uh, food worker. Most of our outbreaks do come from long-term care facilities with norovirus. That's what we see most of. But we have had, uh, you know, a part of our investigation, we've investigated, um, like, uh, catered events. And interestingly, given you have to go through every single person that was ill and even ones that weren't ill to see what each person ate, so you can try to target what the source was. And interestingly, we, we did one where we found that it was, um, somebody had brought in their own dish of peanuts and it had nothing to do with the caterer, so.
Commissioner Lindy, I'd like to add, one of the reasons that we take it so seriously is that, as Melissa appropriately indicated, if you have an outbreak at a long-term care facility and people already have compromised health, you literally can lead to severe illness, hospitalization or death. Also, because we are fortunate to be a, a regional, uh, location for people meeting, whether it's the Central Washington State Fair or events at our convention center, the amount of work that we invest, uh, on the backend of an investigation is dramatic because you could deal with hundreds, if not thousands of people who, who ventured to Yakima, ate, became ill and went home. And so the, the investigations, the training, the competencies of our staff is necessary from a safety standpoint, because again, this has been the, uh, the backbone of the idea of us being a responsive agency, responding to the needs of the community in real time.
I'll add real quick too, that's, that's why we pay so close attention in our inspections to, uh, ill food worker policy. I mean, we, we know a lot of those jobs are, um, they need staff to operate a restaurant efficiently. And it's stressful when you're short staffed, but, uh, so a lot of managers will say, you need to get to work. I don't care if you're on your deathbed. So that's why we pay attention to, uh, our, our ill food, the ill food worker policy that's in place at these restaurants. Because we know if an ill food worker is, is working and prepping food and serving food, chances are they're going to get somebody else ill and that's just going to spread from there.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinney.
Yes, I, I wanted to thank Sean for the presentation too, and just acknowledge that
You can barely, excuse me, we can barely hear you.
Well.
Do your best.
I've got audio issues today, sorry. But I just wanted to say thank you to Sean, uh, for the presentation, also knowing that he's been working, uh, with Ryan so closely with staff at the county, uh, to work on, um, the, the, the building and permitting. So I, that was a lot for you to do in the last couple of weeks to get both of those done. So I just want to thank you and Ryan.
Thank you. Dr. Cleary, you have your hand up. Did you have something further?
No, I just forgot to take it down.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further questions or comments?
Commissioner Anderson, I'm just, if I may, um, just share something if that's okay.
Sure.
We really believe as, uh, as Sean said, and certainly Ryan before him as the Director of Environmental Health, that our commitment is to education first. We are not looking to simply have the best possible inspection in a restaurant. We're trying to allow for education opportunities so that owners of restaurants, those that serve the public are prepared and doing their best. We know that people who, especially in the food industry, um, really care about the work they do. They want to prepare and they certainly want people to enjoy their food, go home safe and return. So it is truly a partnership with business and it's something that we really truly are committed to.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yeah, Commissioner, I just wanted to touch on, uh, Dr. Cleary's question around wildfire smoke. So I've just said on a statewide group called the Washington State Smoke Advisory Impact Group, I believe is the proper term. Because obviously smoke definitely plagues this valley and, uh, over these last few years, wildfire smoke season has not only gotten worse here in Yakima County, but certainly throughout the state. And, uh, as a state, we collectively recognized that, um, there wasn't universal language uh, around, uh, when events or schools should think about closing due to wildfire smoke. Communication tools, where do people go to look and, and figure out what the smoke, uh, situation is currently, uh, in their area? Um, and all of these tools, uh, there was just not any universal language around that. So, uh, this group really started in 2018, 2019 to start addressing these things and, uh, start working on solutions to some of these issues. So, um, obviously COVID has derailed some of that, but, uh, it is something that we're actively working on with statewide partners as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some of you, um, are not old enough to remember, but, uh, I grew up in the valley. And there was a time when orchidists burned tires and lit smudge pots full of oil to keep their orchards from freezing. So especially the tires, uh, you could see the remnants of that floating in the air and your mouth and your nose would get just black, uh, from that. And, uh, our air is to me is a much cleaner right now than it ever was. So just a, just a comment. So we'll move on now to, uh, the COVID-19 and masking guideline reports. And first up is the update with Andre.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Welcome to the board and good morning to our, uh, guests. Well, the, the largest issue that I wanted to touch on briefly, and you'll hear more in the reports that follow me, is the change that the governor shared last week in terms of the mask mandate for statewide masking. Uh, I'd like to begin with the most, um, well, the, the, the one that will affect us earliest, and that would be March 1st. The governor has changed vaccine verification for large events. So vaccine verification will no longer be required in Washington State as of March 1st. I do want to share that federal laws are still necessary on transportation. So you will see face masks being required on certain, uh, public transportation, school buses, uh, airplanes and so forth. So that is the first, uh, that of the, of the new rules that will be enacted on March 1st. Then on March 21st, uh, there's a major change, which is face mask will no longer be required in most settings indoors. And that includes, uh, schools, but Ryan will touch on that. Masking will still be required in, uh, medical settings, hospitals, outpatient clinics and so forth, uh, as well as long-term care settings and correctional facilities. The guidance is silent on one issue, uh, that is concerning to me. And we've asked the Department of Health to clarify, and that is that one of the conquering limit facilities we're very concerned about are, uh, homeless shelters. And the guidance is silent on that currently. So we'll be working on that as well to make certain that there's clarification from the Department of Health. We will have updated guidance from the Department of Health as we move closer to that, March 21st, um, date. But other than that, we are waiting on other guidance. And certainly I'm happy to answer any questions on this issue, but we will have more clarity from, uh, from my colleagues. Any questions so far?
I do have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Does it sound better?
No, it's better. I thought it was better.
I, I'm, I do my best, like we all do, to just push buttons and see if something happens. Um, you know, I, I have heard a lot, uh, from folks who are, you know, they, they look at the DOH website and I do realize that there's a significant difference, uh, between the numbers that even the CDC has for our, our seven day, uh, rate of new hospitalizations per 100,000, which is the metric that we're supposed to get, uh, five or under as a state. And I, I understand that the CDC does not show, um, military hospitals or, um, nation tribe, uh, hospitals. And so that is why there's a difference. But my question is, has it come up in conversations where, um, the data that is being used though is so old? So the data that is being used is, is based off the most recent reporting of February 5th, which is when even Yakima, uh, according to our sit rep and to, uh, the Department of Health website, our, our average, uh, was 20.1. Uh, and if everyone looked at the most recent sit rep that we just received yesterday, we were at five last week and now we're at three and a half. And as a state, um, through the 5th of February, it's much lower as well. So I'm just wondering if there's any discussion about having it happen sooner? If we can acknowledge that we all know that, uh, hospitalizations have just nosedived, precipitously even since the 5th of February. So has there been any conversations about doing it sooner than March 21st to recognize the actual state uh, of, of our readiness in the hospitalizations?
I have not gotten that indication from, from either the Department of Health or the Governor's Office. And, uh, I can only speak to what I've been told and what I've seen is that the Governor's Office and, uh, Dr. Shaw, the Secretary of Health for the state had looked at, uh, projections for reductions in hospitalizations, as you indicated. Uh, they were looking at statewide data and the, uh, anticipated, uh, drop, the decline was dramatic uh, and would continue to. So that, that's how, as I understand it, that's how the March 21st date was decided. Uh, I will share that, uh, with changes to masking and with changes to social distancing and the rules around those, we may see an increase in cases. We may see people who become more ill because we're still in a dangerous circumstance where the, um, the Omicron variant is easily transmissible. Um, I'm hoping that our numbers don't increase. I'm hoping we don't have increased hospitalizations, but other states that have reduced mask mandates have also seen increases in the short term. So I'm hoping that's not the case. But to answer your question, I don't have any indication that they're looking to do it sooner.
Uh, I, I would say that I'm supportive of this board wants to further discuss and, and if anyone wants to follow up on my questions. But I would like to see, um, the board make a recommendation, uh, that we would request that if the data, uh, is there sooner, that the mask mandate ends sooner. Because we're looking at data that is several weeks behind. I do understand Um, because we're looking at data that is several weeks behind. I do understand that maybe the Department of Health is going to update their website today. Uh, but it would be something that I would be highly supportive of, uh, because of course, if we're following the science and data, I think there's no reason why we can't follow it in real time. Uh, several weeks ago, we already know what our numbers are. They've been vetted. To your point on Andre too, about the potential for cases rising, uh, another interesting fact, since we had the columns added to our sit rep, which, which does a side-by-side comparison of, uh, hospitalizations, cases and deaths for the year. Uh, you will note if, that, uh, we have already had more cases in Yakima County in two thousand twenty-two than we did in the entire year of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we also had significantly less hospitalizations, uh, and significantly fewer deaths associated with those same case counts. I believe the case count, uh, is a little over twenty-seven thousand. Uh, our death rate, uh, I believe was about point three two percent for the overall, uh, deaths related to those twenty-seven thousand. So it's really important to see those side-by-side comparisons. And what it does is supports the fact, uh, that we don't see as great a number of people being hospitalized, uh, per the, per the number of people who are catching COVID. Um, and obviously, uh, it proves that the Omicron variant was incredibly, um, high spread. Uh, because again, in six weeks' time, we achieved the same number of cases. Uh, and as we all know, there was a supreme shortage on tests. So a lot of folks were positive with COVID and simply could not acquire a test. And we of course had the advent of, uh, readily available at-home tests. Uh, so we can, we can say that there were significantly more people who had Omicron than likely had a test that came through, uh, the accounting. So I'm open for discussion if the, anyone else on the board wants to discuss the potential of, of requesting, uh, that the governor consider ending the mask mandate much sooner, considering the data supports it.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, I'll, I'll just make a comment. I, I'm not sure that's such a, a great way to look at things, that the, uh, case rate was, uh, not much higher. We definitely had more cases, as you mentioned, and just as many hospitalizations and deaths. So it's, Omicron has not really been a, an improvement. Uh, if we have just as many people dying, uh, or possibly even more on a monthly average. And I, I think one of the concerns I hear is that, uh, this is going to occur fairly rapidly. And there's a concern about, uh, whether vaccinations, um, are still going to be available and whether there's going to be any change, uh, in ex, access to vaccinations because, uh, there's an anticipation that there will be an upswing in, in cases once we remove masks. I, I think everybody is, uh, convinced that the current, uh, regulations, mask wearing, distancing and such, uh, have been responsible for keeping case rates, hospitalizations, uh, and deaths down. So I, I think it would actually be a, a good idea for the Health District to, uh, try to make sure that people are aware of this timeline and that it would allow for them, uh, to become vaccinated. Those that wish to, who have not yet, uh, they could get their vaccinations, uh, in the next, you know, three weeks, four weeks and be vaccinated by the time everybody takes their masks off.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? All right. Well, we'll move on then to.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. I was waiting to see if anyone had, just a response to Dr. Cleary. I think it is important to actually note the real, the numbers. So what you said, actually, I, I find to be, I don't think factual with regard to cases, uh, versus hospitalizations and deaths. So let me just read straight from our sit rep. Uh, because I do think it's important to acknowledge the reality that we have in our county. So for two thousand twenty-two, we had twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine cases resulting in three hundred and forty-five hospitalizations and seventy-four deaths. In two thousand twenty-one, we had twenty-seven thousand three hundred and forty cases resulting in one thousand two hundred and seventy-six hospitalizations and three hundred and one deaths. So if you look at it on a monthly basis, of course, your average, um, it, we had more cases in that six-week time period than an entire year. And so the hospitalization rate per positive case is significantly lower, as is the death rate.
What was the death rate per month for this year versus last year?
Per month is irrelevant when we know that we have an Omicron spread where we literally had an amount, a population of Yakima County catch COVID over the same course of an entire year previously. It speaks to the spread. And it speaks to the immunity that has been naturally acquired by those people layered on top of the vaccination immunity acquired. So we are quite significantly in a better point than we have ever been.
So is twenty-five people dying per month last year, thirty-seven dying per month this year?
Per case, sir.
No.
The cases, you're telling me.
So more cases and more deaths.
More cases, yes.
And more deaths.
Acquired COVID, sir.
And more people died. And more people died.
More people did not die as a percentage of the people who caught the virus, sir.
Does the percent matter?
It's the number of people. It, first of all, every life matters. We can agree.
Okay, then more deaths are not good.
We have people though who perish from things that are.
Okay, I think this isn't going anywhere and we're getting into one of the hit for attack.
Let's, uh, let's, uh, uh, discontinue this. We have a lot more to cover.
Commissioner Anderson, I'm, I'm almost finished, if I may. Commissioner Anderson, thank you so much. I did want to share that one of the consequences of Omicron is that it's had a devastating effect on business. Uh, we have seen people who have become so ill, luckily, uh, perhaps if they haven't become hospitalized or die, but certainly been impacted. Uh, so this is, uh, as a service, uh, high-service area community, we are still concerned about any surge. And I do want to share with you that as we move away from the mask mandate, we may see more surges. So the work of the Health District will continue. Uh, we don't anticipate, uh, Omicron or COVID, uh, writ large being, being gone from our community anytime soon. So the work that we do matters because we have to remain vigilant. Part of that is, again, being responsive, the agency, working with people like Nathan and all of our directors to continue that work. Uh, as I mentioned in our last meeting, we have new funding streams, foundational public health services being one of them, and we want to be able to use that, uh, to help bridge, uh, this transition, which should happen at some point from a disaster response to a recovery response. But I do want to, uh, pre-warn the board that the recovery process in Yakima may be complicated and certainly is a great deal of work. It adds a great deal to the portfolio for our directors and our staff. And we want to be prepared for that because we know that there are consequences from COVID and we're going to have to remain vigilant. Uh, one change that I was just on a call about yesterday was that the State Department of Health is also trying to be more responsive and they want to have more mobile, uh, teams in the field. Uh, that's a big change, something that we advocated for, for many years, having more Department of Health, uh, leaders and staff in Eastern Washington because it was always centered on Olympia. Now we have that and they're looking at and referring to it as regional offices. But I also want to share that that becomes a competitive disadvantage for us because there's more job opportunities at the state now. So, uh, really, things are changing dramatically. I want to, um, share those in sort of landscapes with you because we want to retain our staff. We want to be prepared to handle outbreaks and changes and responsive needs to the community. It's going to be a long process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lindy.
Yes, I just thank you. Just really quickly, yes, uh, although we, we may have some mandates, uh, going away, which I, which I consider to be a positive. I, I think people are pretty tired at this point of, of a lot of the mandates. So it doesn't mean that, as, uh, Director Fresco mentioned, that the, that, uh, you know, coronavirus has just gone away and there still won't be a need to be able to, you know, train and educate and inform the public as to best health practices. And I, I, I frankly like that position of the Health District to be in that position where, where they educate and inform. Uh, that's kind of been the traditional role.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, without further comment, uh, let's move on to, uh, Dr. Varg.
Well, I wish I could, uh, jump on the bandwagon with everybody. But you know, COVID has its own mindset. Cases are fluctuating, but the overall trend is down in Yakima County as well as the rest of the country and rest of the country is actually doing a little better than Yakima County. And the roller coaster may be coming to a stop, don't know. The Paxlovid, which is that protease inhibitor drug, uh, the, the actual paper, the data was published in New England Journal, uh, this past week. And it, um, showed the, the data that showed about a ninety percent reduction in the risk of hospitalization and patients that receive it is in that publication. So great tool, limited only by the supply. And, uh, as time goes on, the supply will become better. And my guess is, you know, if a patient goes to their doctor, they get tested for COVID, they'll get a prescription for Paxlovid, just like they would if they had influenza and they got a prescription for Tamiflu. That's probably months away though. Um, other interventions like the Sotrivimab and, uh, remdesivir given early after, uh, publicly, the, uh, test is positive is quite limited by the availability of nurses who can start and maintain IVs. So much of this is being done in the group of patients that are incidentally admitted to the hospital and found to have COVID. They're getting these medications in the hospital, which is good. But we just can't spread it to the community very effectively without, without the nurses. So patience and caution, you know, uh, your mom always told you that. So what's going on now? You've heard about the new variant, the Omicron B two. And it's, uh, starting, it's been identified in the United States. And as has happened with Omicron and Delta, it's already prominent in other parts of the world. So I'm sure our, our in case numbers will go up. What does this mean? We don't have any solid published data, just some observations and preliminary studies. And we don't know, uh, if the fact that it spreads faster, it's about one point five times faster than the current strain of Omicron. Uh, whether that's going to make an impact. And in some preliminary studies, it might cause greater disease, but we don't know if that's going to make an impact either. And be confirmed with more, uh, study. The virus seems to be able to escape the immunity that's been offered by prior infections. Uh, but, um, if a, in prior infected patient is immunized and boosted, it seems to restore immunity. Uh, so regardless of, uh, previous infection, it seems like it's still a good idea to get, uh, fully vaccinated and boosted, uh, to, uh, affect the outcomes of getting infected. The new, uh, monoclonal antibodies, Sotrivimab, which is very effective at preventing progression to severe disease, it with the current Omicron strain does not work against the new Omicron strain B two. So that's not good news. Uh, just to further complicate this whole process, uh, some people are thinking that it's, this strain is really not supposed to be called Omicron because there's so many mutations that should be a unique strain. Um, the main name doesn't really matter at this point. It's just what it ends up doing and we're too early on to know for, for, uh, a fact. You may have heard this term, uh, stealth Omicron. Uh, that doesn't refer to anything about the disease process. It just, uh, points towards the fact that the current test, which identifies the Omicron strain different from Delta and Alpha, that difference doesn't show up in the B two strain, but it still is diagnosed by PCR, uh, or the home test. Uh, you know, I guess one of the things I read is that we may not be in for the biggest, uh, type of problems we ran into with previous strains. Uh, because of the fact, uh, that the combination of people who have had previous infections and the combination of people that get boosted may keep the runaway, uh, events from happening like they, they did with Omicron. And the final thing is always is the case loads, uh, increase, the number of available healthcare workers get stretched. And, uh, P T, keeping the absolute number of cases as low as we can is going to benefit the community. The poor nurses and a lot of the doctors taking care of patients are just about out of gas. So we have to wait. We have to be cautious. Um, the best possible outcome of reducing the mask mandate is things don't go up, but they reduce, uh, or the rate of reduction, uh, tapers slowly over time. So a lot of people are hoping that that happens and that we don't see a real bump and I'm okay with it slowing down. Uh, so, we'll see what happens. As always, every time I tell you guys, we just have to wait and see. Last time I said, wait and see and Omicron's going down, but now B twos come back to haunt us, hopefully not too much. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Varg?
Dr. Varg, I, I just have a question about the, um, available antivirals. And I know with the monoclonal antibody and when, uh, Paxlovid was, was studied, it was important to, uh, initiate therapy extremely early in the course. And I was wondering if you could just review then what is available in the community and how we're, uh, getting the information out to, to people to get diagnosed and present for treatment early on.
So we do have the Sotrivimab available to the extent that the state allocates doses. Uh, they look at where the hotspots are and they try and allocate the doses appropriately. And it is being given in the hospital to people who are, um, diagnosed within, uh, five to seven days and earlier, you know, it's preferable to get it even earlier, three to five days. The re, the distribution of it is, you know, limited by the total supply. So if we opened it up, say, to an outpatient clinic, it has to be given intravenously as opposed to the Regeneron, you know, monoclonal antibody, which doesn't work against the current strain. If the current strain of Omicron de- decreases significantly and the new strain, uh, increases significantly, it won't matter because the Sotrivimab doesn't work. The Paxlovid is, you know, I don't know how much the availability is, but it's distributed in the same way, uh, to areas that seem to have the most cases. And I know it's being given, uh, at various clinics in town. I don't have numbers though, on, on how many doses are being delivered. And again, that's, uh, best within five days of the positive test. And, uh, realistically, a pill could probably be distributed pretty easy that early on. Um, the remdesivir is available, but we don't have the infrastructure to give it. And again, in the hospital, it's being offered to patients, uh, who, uh, are incidentally found to be COVID positive when they're there because the infrastructure, the nurses, the IV management is available and it's a three-day infusion. So again, uh, could be a, could be set up as an outpatient with the proper infrastructure. Uh, so we're limited by nurses. The manip, the mononipvir is available, but, um, I don't know actually how many doses are being prescribed by physicians. I, we'd have to get sort of pharmacy help, uh, around the, around the district to, uh, figure that out.
And I think that would be helpful because I, uh, I talked to a family practitioner last week who just wasn't aware of the, the exact timing and then where to even refer a high-risk patient to get a, an outpatient therapy like, like Paxlovid. Uh, and so it'd be nice if there was some central source, uh, of reference, uh, through the pharmacist, um, as to where to access these drugs and make sure that the, the family practitioners who are doing the testing in their clinics know that they need to get high-risk patients, uh, to that drug as quickly as possible.
Yeah, you know, the centralization of the data, I think, would be an important step to, uh, make, not just for now, but for future issues. Um, and I think there's a state pharmacy association we can try and partner with. Uh, also, we'll talk, I'll talk to some of the other he- health officers in other counties and see, uh, what type of infrastructure they're building to capture the data. Cause you know, people don't know about it. It's not going to help as much. I agree.
Any further questions or comments for Dr. Varg?
Uh, Nyla had her hand raised and then I didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry. I missed you. Sorry, Nyla.
Hi, Commissioner Anderson, thank you. I just had, um, my, my main concern is the access to, to medical care and treatment in the Yakima County. Um, can you please give us a picture of what, what the ERs look like and how hard it is to become an inpatient in, in Yakima County? I know currently there are thirty-two hospitalized and three intubated and it takes a lot of resources, nurses and doctors. But with other people that, that have other emergencies like heart attacks or infections or something that needs medical treatment right away, how hard is it for them to be treated? I know firsthand, I have a family member who, um, tried to, she went to the hospital on Saturday night and she needed to be, um, treated for, for an infection and there was no. Treated for for an infection and there was no no beds available. And she had to wait a couple of days to to become an inpatient. Is that a pattern right now in Yakima County?
Yes, that's been going on really for several months into the original outbreak. So what's happening is there's a bottleneck in the emergency room. So so many people are coming to the emergency rooms, the regular beds are occupied by patients. And when people are are ill with COVID or anything else, they get stacked up in the hallways and other locations in the hospital. Because the admitting process actually takes a fair amount of time. You know, I've been working in hospitals for twenty two years and up until COVID, I've never seen patients stacked in the hallways. I mean, it's not, they're, you know, nicely cared for in the hallways, but it is, it gives you an idea of the limits of the medical system to deal with the diseases. And you're absolutely right. Other diseases and COVID gets slowed down because of the COVID cases. So it's still having an impact what when the rate of disease goes down in the community, the rate of hospitalization goes down in the community. Father lasts by the rate of deaths from COVID. So yeah, you're, you know, that's a concern that through the entire outbreak time. That people with other diseases aren't getting timely care. They're not getting denied the care. It just would happen earlier. If the emergency rooms weren't stuck up with all the COVID cases. I hope that answers your question.
Well, my concern also is like, you know, there's been several people that have delayed their medical treatment. Are seeking medical emergency care, you know, they they wait until they are so bad, they wait until they're. You know, on the verge of stepsis or in the verge of dying. And then some people have actually died. So I know that in the past, we have said that it's important to have our to continue our mitigation strategies. To continue wearing masks, to continue encouraging vaccinations. Do you think that? It's wise to to start removing those things if Yakima County is still experiencing. A really hard strain in our medicals, medical care system?
Well, you bring up a good point. You know, mitigation isn't perfect, taking taking away mitigations aren't perfect either. Somewhere we need to strike a balance. People really are getting tired, including healthcare workers. I think with the next four weeks, you know, before the mask mandate is lifted, let's say about March fifteenth or March twentieth. The data generated from that time should give us a better idea. The state could change their mind, you know, based on changes in the data. I mean, remember we had Alpha was tailing off and the mask mandate was removed. And then we were surprised by Delta because, you know, we didn't know that could happen again. So I think it's still. Unknown what's going to happen in the next four weeks. We'll have to wait and see. I mean, we all hope that it's just a slow slower taper rather than a big bump. So. I don't know what they're going to decide to do, but I know they'll base it on what the data shows.
Now, this as even though the mandate is being lifted, the stance from the Health District and the Department of Health is that they are still recommended. To wear masks. So the mandate will be lifted, but the recommendation is still there from public health to wear a mask and and follow the. You know, vaccinate and follow all the public health recommendations.
Councilmember DeVal, if I may also add, we were very disadvantaged in our community to lose a major hospital in the city of Yakima just before COVID started. We also lost dedicated staff who had made Yakima their home. And we have been very fortunate to have colleagues in the medical community who have dedicated themselves to keeping people safe and alive during COVID. But all those people who are committed to Yakima are not only exhausted, they're heartsick from watching so much death. And we are going to have what we've seen traditionally as long term health consequences from people avoiding care. It's it's unfortunate that many people who are disadvantaged don't receive the care that they require. We now see that as a community wide disadvantage. It's something that happened to people at all socioeconomic levels. And the the added stress of being fearful of not knowing whether you're going to survive. I think we're going to see over the next few years, many, many consequences from that. So again, I don't think it's that you flip a switch and everybody's in safe mode or recovery mode. I think that you are going to see people who are exhausted or weary or, you know, disinclined to want to continue to do their chosen profession. So we're going to see that in healthcare, certainly going to see that in public health. I think we'll see that in education, social service agencies. It's going to be something that we at the Health District want to commit to supporting as people transition, but it's going to be a very difficult process. Because we haven't had an event like this really since. Well, from a public health standpoint, since nineteen eighteen, we had World War Two, we had certainly the after effects of. Vietnam War. This is going to be a very difficult time. This is the issue of our lifetime.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinney.
Dr. Barg, so you you mentioned the the treatment that was provided for incidental findings of cases in the hospitals. Is that for our hospitals in Yakima County specifically at both Austria and Memorial?
Well, the ability to do it is available to any hospital that has the drug in supply. And again, it's limited to those types of people only because the outpatient infrastructure isn't able to be built. To allow it to be given to patients at high risk. So let me just clarify, if you if you're discovered to have COVID, either inpatient or outpatient, a group of those people are. Easy to predict at high risk for, for instance, a transplant patient or a morbidly obese patient with hypertension and poorly controlled diabetes. Those are the kind of folks that are at high risk to progress and then eventually be hospitalized. So they would be candidates for receiving the medication. How many people get it is limited by the infrastructure for the outpatient and the supply of the drug.
Is is there any other treatment that is prescribed for people who are incidentally found to be positive for COVID when entering the hospital?
Would you be asking about things other than the Pfizer drug remdesivir and the other antivirus?
Anything. So if you if you go into the hospital and you're found incidentally to be found positive for COVID, what's what is the? What would be the natural progression of steps for them to determine if they were going to prescribe you anything or do anything, you know, differently?
Once the patient's identified as high risk for progression, it's decision of the physician and nurse team that are taking care of them to decide whether they get sertrivimab, remdesivir, or Paxil.
So I guess what I'm also, so there is a way when someone enters the hospital to determine if they were incidentally found to be positive for COVID then, is that correct?
If they come in and they're going for a surgical procedure, for instance, they're automatically tested. So that, you know, when the patient's transported and the and the procedure is done, they know that they're negative. They turn out to be positive and they're high risk, they're then treated. If there are a hospital that tests everybody that comes in and you're right, you can identify patients that have incidental COVID. If again, they're at high risk for progression, they might receive these medications as well.
Does Memorial Hospital test everyone for COVID who enters?
You know, I don't know what they're doing right now. It was limited in the past by the supply of the testing and the people available to actually run the test. I'd have to ask them and see what they're doing policy wise.
Aren't they required to do that as a nature of being able to protect the people who are coming in that are high risk?
Yeah, I don't think there is a requirement, but I could be wrong. I can check.
Yeah, I would like to know what is the process for testing for COVID when someone comes into the hospital and not just Memorial. It would be interesting to know what our hospital systems in Yakima County are doing.
Yeah, it's easy to find out.
Thank you. Commissioner Lindy. You're on mute.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, I just I just want to express a thank you to Dr. Barg. I appreciate these these ongoing reports. I found them very, very informative. And I will say that I've actually had the opportunity to sit down with Dr. Barg individually on a couple of occasions and and he's he's always been great. He's he's a great source of knowledge. And and I don't think he has any other agenda than just to get it right. So I just I just want to say thank you. And I know he's opened the visits for many of us as board members. So. You know, this this whole pandemic, though, does bring up, when you look at the fact that there are certain people that are higher risk, you know, categories or susceptibility for severe illness due to COVID. The issue of our health in general as a population, you know, and what can we do for that as we move forward? That's all. Just a comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, we will move on then to testing and vaccines with Mr. Nathan.
Morning, everybody. I don't have a big update for everybody. The the only thing I wanted to update the board on is. On the twenty eighth, we will be transitioning from two mobile vaccine teams down to one. Recognizing that the amount of doses that we're pushing out are slowing down, but we also want to continue to be nimble. And still provide a service to the community. So we will have that one team. And again, that contract goes till March, end of March. We have not heard whether or not FEMA funds will be extended for vaccine support after that, but all things we're looking into. So I think that's my only big update. We continue to have three community based test sites available. Again, the State Fair Park contract right now is set to expire at the end of March. We're in discussions of whether or not that will continue or not. And then the two sites that are funded and managed through U Dub, so the college site and the sunny side site. They're anticipating to continue to stay open through end of summer with some minor changes here and there. But that way we'll continue to have flexibility for testing and certainly be able to help take that off of the healthcare system as well. For people who need to get tested. So I think that's all I have to update.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Nathan? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to schools with Mr. Ryan.
All right, in the last fourteen days, it's been one thousand eight hundred and seventy cases of COVID in Yakima County of those four hundred and thirty are school age kids. So we're seeing a decline in school age kids that have COVID. That's twenty three percent of the cases. So that's also going down. We've been around twenty six, twenty seven percent of school age kids are the total number of cases. So that's good to see. Also, school guidelines will be out the week of March seventh. So we're anticipating a lot of quite a few changes. And so we'll continue to work with school superintendents and school nurses on those changes on the guidelines. Because it's about a week and a half to a little over a week, depending on what day they actually come out. To to figure out what what the guidelines are and to have discussions and answer any questions in the school tab. That's all I have for schools.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ryan?
Have you, Ryan, what is the discussion amongst, I know that, you know, the statewide mask mandate doesn't necessarily mean that different. That superintendents and school boards are still obviously with with local health. Board input to to remove their mask mandates. Have you, do you have any indication of how many school districts have already indicated that they plan to remove their mask mandate or any who have indicated they would not?
Yeah, I haven't heard any school districts are not going to that are going to continue requiring masks. I know some school districts have already gone to their boards and and there's been votes that they will not no longer wear masks after require masks after March twenty first. I know several superintendents, they do want to talk to their school board, talk to their staff, talk to to everyone involved before those decisions made. So so it was kind of nice that there is some time to discuss with all the affected people before that March twenty first day.
Thank you. And it's just, it's mask optional, right? If anyone wants to wear a mask, they certainly can choose to.
Right, as long as, yeah, the school district goes that direction, then yes.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you. We will move on then to medical with Melissa.
I don't really have much to add. We've covered a lot of the things I was going to talk about, but as Ryan said, so the mask mandate will come off for schools, March twenty first, the guidance will come out. And the guidance we're anticipating, because without the mask, it really changes everything, including contact investigation and isolating close contact or quarantining close contacts. So it really changes everything. And we're anticipating a lot of changes coming out with that guidance on March seventh. Hopefully, we'll be able to free up some time for the school nurses and get them back to being able to care for the for the kids like they usually do, including the mental health aspect of it. The the, as Andrean said earlier, there is the federal law which requires masking on public transportation. So masks at this point are still going to be required on the school buses for kids. That hasn't changed yet. The state has said they are going to be talking about that, but at this point, it's still going to apply to school buses. And then I just, I can just share my screen really quick. I wanted to go back to the hospitalization. Can you see the screen with the graph?
There we go. Yep.
Okay, so this is what our epidemiologist puts together. So even though this this one was not the current, was the one we prepared yesterday. So you can see, she puts in in yellow the reported numbers. So as of February eighteenth, this is where we were at with six point two. This should have been two twenty two, not one twenty two, but because of the lag, it adjusted. So she she does this graph to show that even if you are hospitalizations, they're saying three point five right now because of the lag, it's going to increase. And so you could just see the trend, how there there is a lag in all of that. So I just wanted to show that the governor, you know, he they use projections to look at that five per hundred thousand. And the reason why they chose March twenty first is because they believe that hospitals can function normally if we get to a rate of five per hundred thousand for hospitalizations. And based on the projections, looking at one that the state did versus one that another entity did, I am not sure who it was. But one had projected in April, the state projected March in March. So that's the date that they went off on, the date that they felt that we would hit that five per hundred thousand. And so that's why they they stuck with the March twenty first and they did, they did say that they feel that if if it was going to be so focused on the five per hundred thousand, he would have made that the metric, but he made the date. So we're not anticipating any changes to that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for just for Melissa? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Lillian and communications.
Thank you. Just a short update as we continue to see there's lots of changes. So just trying to stay up to date and making sure that people are aware of what the updates are and communicating those out. And then, of course, as we move towards lifting some of these different mandates, figuring out the best practice to how to communicate that even though these mandates are being lifted, recommendations are are still essentially the same. And so also looking at how do we continue to. Promote the vaccine is sixty four percent of the total population has been fully vaccinated, but only twenty percent of that sixty four percent has actually received their booster. So still plenty of work to do to promote our the resources that are available. And so Commissioner Lindy, I will be following up with you on your ideas for communication efforts moving forward. And Dr. Clearly, clearly, we can certainly incorporate some of the suggestions that you've made as well. Other than that, there are still at home rapid test kits that are available to people. And so just wanting to communicate again for people to continue to routine test with symptomatic exposed or post travel or after having attended large events. But other than that, working essentially on some of the same routine communications that we have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Lillian? Hearing none, we'll move on to Mr. Chase.
Good morning. Thank you. We'll get into the financial report starting on page, page fourteen. It'll be page fifteen in the the financial page down. Yes, please. Thank you. So this is where the the first month, first month of twenty twenty two. The first quarter you'll you'll see is very fluctuates quite a bit compared to budget. As we gain experience throughout the year, we'll kind of start to see those fluctuate fluctuations that you know. So for the month of January, we had a ninety thousand dollar gain. And we have a total adopted budget for twenty twenty two, our revenue, we're expecting about twenty point seven million dollars. And we're expecting to expend approximately twenty one million dollars. Our total actuals for the month was about nine hundred and forty thousand in revenue and eight hundred and fifty thousand in expenditures. Leaving quite a bit of money left to spend for the rest of the year. Moving into the income statement, please, next page. Last year, you compare our our actual figures compared to our budget figures ran at a overage for the majority of the year. As you guys know, we had to open up the budget at midyear and amend it to add additional funds to be spent. I feel like we're going to kind of see the opposite this year. Our actual. I feel like we're going to kind of see the opposite this year. Our actuals are going to be under budget. If things go kind of go according to plan, they'll be slightly under budget through throughout the year. And so it'll be kind of a flip, kind of a difference than we saw from from prior year. But we're looking at the the federal monthly, the federal is quite a bit lower than where our budget is, $730,000 lower. And that has a lot to do with some timing with our Columbia safety vaccine mobile teams. So those mobile teams invoicing when the financials for January were being issued, we hadn't seen the second half of Columbia safeties invoicing for January. So that sense has come in. And that's kind of what I'm speaking towards is there's more fluctuations that you'll see at the beginning of the year compared compared to the the rest of the year. Because if you see, we're missing an invoice from somebody, it won't have such a large impact on the financials. And also a reason that we probably will see our actuals be underneath budget is we might be ramping down services. As as Nathan spoke to earlier, maybe we might be losing a testing site. We're reducing one down. One mobile vaccination team. Kind of similar thing happened to us last year, right? We were starting to see decline in numbers and we're starting to feel optimistic. And then we had variants hit and everything take back up. So hopefully, we'll continue to see better figures, you know, are as far as cases go to that'll start to go down and then hopefully we won't be having to spend as much money in the community in the valley to fight those those cases. Any questions on this? On this page, next page, please. Again, we'll see the variation seems stark right here, but that has a lot to do with just just one month of experience. And we'll kind of start to see the variations flatten out throughout the year. Any questions on the income statement? Next page, please. Into our programs, not much to note here. Where as again, we're just seeing it very, very flat, not a lot to speak towards. If we can move towards the bottom of the page, our onsite has has been losing, has lost money on the month. We will continue to keep an eye on that program throughout the year. There is a possibility that we might have to have a rate adjustment for fees when we're doing the budget for 2023. But we'll keep an eye on that and we'll be talking about that if that needs to be done. Any questions on the program, this program piece? Next program piece, please. Again, there's nothing much to note here. More of our programs are EH programs. Summer camps, there's a big uptick right now, but that's because a lot of the invoicing for the summer camps. Or I'm sorry, water wreck happens right now, the pools. I'm listening to that Sean was speaking part earlier. Next page, please. And we're down into our COVID income statement. Mostly federally funded. And I had, sorry, again, I had some sort of formatting issue. So those numbers should be skewed or the the things should be should be down. So I apologize for that. I'll make sure that's corrected for for next month. Any questions?
Any questions?
Page moving into the very last page, this is our cash flow. One more page down, please. Our 2022 cash flow, we're ending with 8.87 million dollars for the month of of January, which is generally about our average. We've been about 8.5, 8.7 in in total cash and cash flow. That wraps up my report. There's no more questions.
Just a question for Chase?
Yeah, just a quick question, Chase. So obviously, you know, your the budget, I mean, this is pretty typical, it fluctuates during the year. What kind of reserve do we have on here?
What do you mean by reserve?
Well, available, you know, just available funds to to help us through these, you know, the ebb and flow.
Okay, well, we have $500,000 in our enhanced program. Those are for community-driven projects. If there was some sort of needed emergency, we can certainly tap into that. If there was anything as far as we would need board approval, but if there was some sort of initiative that the board very thought they felt strongly about it and we wanted to move money to earmark that, we could do that. So our our $20 million that we have projected is we have funding sources for that, whether that be grant funding or flexible dollar funding. The the spend down of our reserves would be the enhanced program.
And and of that 20 million, then, I mean, does it just come to you during the year or how much of that do you get upfront?
Yeah, well, we get a million dollars deposited to us with our flexible dollars. So that's that comes in $500,000 chunks. Most of our grants are spin-down grants. So the cost reimbursement, as we incur costs, we we reverse them. So we we invoice those people monthly. And we're also working with our foundational public health services. It's an additional pot, very similar to our flexible dollars. And that's received in lump sums at times throughout the year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the financial report for the month of January 2022.
Is Dr. Clary, I'm moved to approve the report.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
The mood and seconded, any further questions or comments? If not, Ryan, would you take a poll, please?
Yes, if you're in favor of the of the financials for the month of January, please state yes. If not, please state no. Dr. Clear.
Yes.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember Byer?
Yes.
Councilmember Duval?
Yes.
Dr. Atterbury?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you, Joe Case. Now we'll move on to department reports and up next is Melissa.
Okay, so non-COVID reports, just reporting on our flu activity, we're still low within the community and also statewide is low. This is typically where we're getting out of flu season. So I don't anticipate that that's going to change. We fortunately have only had five deaths in the state of Washington, all of which were 65 or older, none in Yakima County. And then just yesterday, we got notified that there was a measles case identified in Snohomish County that had exposure as or that was at Sea-Tac Airport as well as Seattle Children's Hospital while infectious. So that could involve some Yakima County residents potentially if there was any travel at at the airport. So just something that the Department of Health notifies everybody statewide. So we can be on the lookout for that. A few years ago, we had our measles outbreak. That's pretty much how that happened as well was travel through the airport and it spread like wildfire. So something will be keeping an eye on. That's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you much. Then we'll move on to environmental health with Sean.
Hello again. All right. So what I wanted to talk about, what we've been working on the EH recently is the septic clearance process at YHD and how it relates and communicates with Yakima County Public Services Building Department on their building permit cases. We've made some serious strides in this area. We've tweaked Acela and modified Acela to implement some notification systems in there that both building and the health district have control over and are responsible to move along in our respective processes. So now instead, the way it's it works, instead of the customer having to communicate with public services, what do I need to do next? Oh, you need to go make application with the health district for septic clearance. Then they have to come to us and call us. And and then when they get their clearance, they have to go call public services to try to, you know, keep everybody on the same page. We're taking all of that stress of the customer feeling like they have to, you know, stay on top of everything. And we've completely eliminated the need for them to worry about that at all. Where what we've done is now the health district will get a notification that there is a case, a building case that needs to be, needs our review. When we result in the case, whether it's approved, not approved, septic clearance required, any of the statuses we can choose from, there is a notification sent back to the building department and then also sent to the customer themselves saying, you know, your your clearance is approved or your clearance cannot be approved or we need a more extensive review. Septic clearance is required. Here's a link to the application. Here's how you could submit the application. Here's here's the fee. So the customer is going to get a notification about what the next step they need to do to to move forward. The idea is that as the building department sends over cases to us, our help desk gets notified. Our environmental health specialist, who is helping run the help desk with our EH technician conducts those reviews same day, results and sends those notifications back to building and to the customer, what needs to happen next. That way, the the night I neither agency is waiting on the other one. We're resulting in the workflows and the cases almost immediately. You know, naturally, we might have walking customers, we need to help. And then when our staff gets back to their desk, they can start reviewing more cases. But we're trying to take the waiting period out of the whole equation by being able to send these notifications back and forth and directly to the customer. So that's the biggest changes that we've made is automated emails that will be sent out. We are under contract with Point and Pay in Acela. We have Point and Pay on board. They're building the web channel for Acela integration as we speak. When then Acela can take that web channel, go live and the health district will have the citizen access portal live and online, much like Yakima County Public Services. That will eliminate the need for customers to drive across town to the health district. I don't have a specific timeline for that. I I've been told that it could be a couple, as short as a couple of weeks from now. I heard that today. So we're hoping that sooner rather than later, I've been bugging those folks every day to try to get them get them moving forward on it. Because we we need that that access portal for for our customers. Once that does go live, we will edit the automated emails to include a link and instructions on how to use the access portal for them to apply online. So they don't have to, you know, call and get, hopefully, we'll have to call and get instructions on how to do that. So really excited about these changes. This should take a lot of the guesswork and it will take all the guesswork out of the process. Neither the health district or public services is going to have any questions. Where are we at in the process? Because it's all going to be tracked step by step in our permit management system that shared between us. So really excited about these changes. And yeah, I think this is a good spot to stop for questions.
Commissioner Lindy?
I'll just, I just want to say a quick thank you for your efforts. Appreciate you and Ryan and and the those at public services that have worked on on making this process improvement. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Nyla?
Thank you. So I had a question about what what if, I don't know how many clients you have that may not have an email to register for X for the for the program or how would they receive their notifications if they are not maybe computer literate on on how to access that program? I don't know if you have any of those clients, but do you have a plan on how you would provide services to them?
We get a few and we do have a plan. It is whatever step in the process they're in. If it's public services, you know, time to shine their own, their step in the process, naturally, they will call the customer to let them know what their next step is. If it's septic review required or they need a septic permit of some sort. If if they need a service from us, then it will be our office duty person reaching out to the customer if they do not have an email. More than likely to be a telephone. So we'll be we'll be reaching out to those folks. Like I said, it's it's, there's a few, but it's not enough to be overwhelming.
And if I may add, Councilmember Duval, we have been committed for many years to having a help desk presence. So people can call, but they can also walk in and without an appointment to ask questions. We have staff fluent in Spanish and we have made it very clear from an equity platform standpoint that no question is a bad question. So if someone's coming in because they want to build a home or they want to start a business or they want to do mobile food vending, it's available to them. And that's really been a commitment to serving every person who walks through the door equally and well, which is a tremendous investment of time, but it is critical to our overall mission, which is to be serviceable. Thank you. Any further questions? Great. If not, we're going to move on to public health partnerships with Lillian.
Thank you. I just wanted to share one update with you all. It's good news. And so I believe I've previously talked about the breast cervical health program. That it's a screening, a cancer screening program that typically serves various counties here in our region. And the Aqua Health District administers it. So on any typical year, we know there's much a much higher need for these services than what we receive funding for. And so we typically run run out of some of those funds partway through the year. We were in a similar situation this year, but we were able to successfully advocate for 30, about 35% more funding to actually make sure that we can continue to provide these screening services to women across the area through the end of the year. So we received a notification that we'll be getting another $160,000 to provide direct medical services. Again, excuse me, direct cancer screening services to the women in the nine counties that we administer the breast cervical health program for. So we're very excited that the State Department of Health recognized the need and that we were able to successfully advocate for more funding for our community members. So that's update, the good news that I wanted to share with you all for this meeting. So thank you.
Yay, that's good. Thank you. Any questions for Lillian? Thank you, Lillian. We'll move on now to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to new business. Is there any new business? Dr. Barge? You're you're muted, doctor.
There it goes. I couldn't click on it the right way. I I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, there's a certain amount of stuff at the at the health district we can't do when we're or we're not doing because it's not evolved that way in in regard to getting these early intervention medications to the hospitals and the clinics. You know, we're not controlling the allocation the DOH does. So it would be great to have a message board or information about where people can go. But it would quickly overwhelm the supply of the medications that are available. So I don't have really great solution for that. I think things like working with pharmacies and getting that data, like we said, is is really good. But the district is really not in charge of getting that stuff administered to the patients, the hospitals are. And I think one thing I'd like to try and do with the board's permission is see if there's a way that we can at least consolidate the information. So you guys have a better idea what's going on in county. Right now, we don't.
Are you are you saying, doctor, with the pharmacies are what what information you want to consolidate?
Yeah, the pharmacies about what's coming in outside of the state allocations. Get the state allocations regularly updated so the district knows what's coming in. And finally, what the capacities are of the hospitals and clinics to actually administer what they're distributed. So you know, I think there's people out there that could benefit from the medications. And for a variety of reasons, we can't get them to. But the biggest problem is the allocation. When the allocation goes up, our ability goes up to to administer these. And I don't mean the health district, I mean the hospitals and the clinics.
If I may, Commissioner Anderson, I I think these are all well-intentioned things. I think that Nathan has certainly tried very hard to get updates around just-in-time information from pharmacies. What's interesting is a lot of the national pharmaceutical chains have direct contracts with the federal government. And so they bypass not only us, but the state. I think I'm saying that correctly, Nathan, in terms of information. I I do think this is a good time also to share that as mandates change, as funding changes, as initiatives change at the state level, the tracking will change as well. As an example, with the advent of home test kits, which was great to make certain that people didn't go to work sick. Nonetheless, having a quick read test at home meant that that information was not tracked through the state. It wasn't going through a lab, as an example. We will see less and less information shared because less and less will be It wasn't going through a lab as an example. We will see, uh, less and less information shared because less and less will be tracked. I do want to forewarn the board again, uh, the board has wanted, uh, real-time tracking of information. There may be less to track. So I just want to share with you that that's not, uh, that is not, uh, an option for us. It, it may be just something that's, that's not available anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, Dr. Clary?
Um, yeah, I just want to comment on that. Did, I, I think the important thing is that we don't want physicians. Uh, who are uncertain about a, a patient's eligibility, sending their patients to the ER. And that's what has happened in the past. And it'd be really nice if, if there was a way that the pharmaceutical company or pharmaceutical, uh, sources. Um, could be relaying this information either to the ERs or to the Yakima County Medical Society. So there is a, uh, a location where doctors can find out what's available, where to send it. And maybe get some feedback as to which of their patients are, are actually good candidates, uh, for this. Without using the ER as a, a triage, uh, for people that, um, probably are not in need of, of these interventions. Or past the, the date when they would be helpful.
Andre, is that something you would like to address?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I was just going to mention, we do have a provider resource website. And so we do have the ability to share our information. What we cannot control is whether, uh, our partners, uh, in the supply chain will share that information. But if, uh, as you mentioned, uh, communication stating what not to do in terms of clogging an emergency room situation. Or not, uh, sending somebody without information, we can certainly assist with that.
I, I think just communicating that you do have that information on the site. I don't know, I don't think people are aware of that. Uh, and the Yakima County Medical Society does reach out. They have, uh, the emails for all the, almost all the physicians in the community. Uh, it, uh, notice through them would also be of help.
Yeah, Dr. Clary, I'd love to follow up with you. I think that having more physicians using that provider resources website would be excellent. And if you have that, uh, partnership with the medical association, that'd be a great next step for us to continue to promote that resource.
All right, um, any further comments or anything? Nothing more for the good of the order. I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just, uh, Nyla Duval and I move to adjourn. Second, thank you.
They moved to second it to adjourn, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. I do appreciate it. Very good meeting.
Thank you.